Forty days in camp, forty days. It did drop, no, sorry, last Friday. So I think he may be on the way. I hope he is.
And welcome to the August 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us and those that are home that are watching. I will remind you, please, those of you in the audience, that we would like to keep things as orderly as possible tonight, and if anyone is speaking, please show their, you, show them your respect while they're speaking. I'll also remind board members, please, to remove your mask when you're speaking in order that TV may be able to pick that up easier, okay? At this time, we're going to ask you to please stand as we have Emily Spencer, Principal at Erma Segal Elementary, and Janisha Campbell, Principal at Northfield, to lead us in our pledge followed by a moment of silence. And now our pledge.
Our pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have received a copy of the agenda and you have looked over that. I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications? Ms. Trail?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a few communications for tonight. First of all, Murfreesboro City Schools Community Outreach would like to express our appreciation to Doctors Russ and Sheri Galloway for their donation to our Indigent Care Fund. They're tremendous, what am I, supporters of our schools. Also, Murfreesboro City Schools would like to thank the Murfreesboro Muslim Youth for their donation of school supplies, including Kleenexes, dry erase markers, lots of hand sanitizer, and sanitizing wipes. Mitchell Nielsen School would like to thank Third Baptist Church and Tasty Table Olive Branch Bakery for providing lunch for the faculty and staff on their first day of school. They'd also like to thank Parks Realty, and we hear them a lot, they're such great supporters of Mitchell Nielsen, for donating teacher, the teacher wish list bags to every teacher in the building. And, once again, our scouts come through. Brennan Slusher actually did his Eagle Scout project at Mitchell Nielsen Primary and actually built another little free library, so thank you to those scouts, we love them. Finally, thank you to First Community Mortgage for providing 11 volunteers to assist with projects at our district office last week. They also gave us a generous food donation for our backpack supplies. We appreciate them and we appreciate the time they gave us in our schools, or actually in our central office. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that our back to school dash is September 18th. The foundation is doing that both virtually and in person, so we'd love to have all of you come out. And that's your communication, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Duke?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Trail's going to keep up.
You just thought you were.
I thought I was finished, I forgot I had a second page on it, my apologies. I wanted to take this time to introduce Sergeant Haley Alden. You want to come on up here? Sergeant Alden is our new school safety supervisor. She is, has been in this role since July. I'm going to have you speak, so be ready. So, we, we love having her. She is actually what Sergeant Newburg was before, and then in the meantime, we've had Lieutenant Carter helping us out. So Sergeant Alden graduated from UT Chattanooga, she has a BS in Criminal Justice. She started with Murfreesboro Police Department in 2009, and she's a member of the SWAT team, as well as the sniper team, so.
Hmm.
She's a pretty tough lady. She also has been in patrol and was promoted to sergeant in 2017. So we are so thrilled to have her, she joined us in July, and we're just happy to have her and all of our SROs at our schools. So I do want to give her the microphone for just a second because we do have some new SROs joining us in our schools, and if you don't mind just talking a little bit about them and the role of SROs. I didn't tell her that she was coming.
So we have two SROs that has started later last year, Benjamin Stamps and Richard Whitley. Our two, we just chose this past week for an interview, are Chris Waters and Chris Harris. So they will be joining us shortly as soon as they get a start date, and we'll be assigning them to their schools.
We do have, as you know, SROs in all of our schools, plus we do have some that rotate if an SRO is out, so we appreciate them, we appreciate you. Can't wait working with you, maybe not too much stuff. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, glad to have you. Dr. Duke?
All right, thank you, good evening, everyone. Tonight, I am very pleased to introduce to you Ms. Charisse McDaniel, as I'm going to ask her to come on up, please. Ms. Charisse McDaniel has started as our new family and community engagement coordinator a few weeks ago. She is replacing Ms. Christie Roberts, who had previously served in this role, which oversees our Family Resource Center. Ms. McDaniel is a native of Murfreesboro and Rutherford County and a proud product of Murfreesboro City Schools. She comes to us with an extensive experience working in positions serving the local community. Most recently, she served with the Mid Cumberland Community Action Agency as the parent, family, and community engagement coach, and has previously served as the family coordinator of Head Start. She is an MTSU graduate and will soon be earning her master's degree in social work, but most importantly, she is married and has three children who are currently attending Black Fox, so welcome, Ms. McDaniel, we're so glad to have you in Murfreesboro City.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, glad to have you.
All right, tonight, Mr. Chairman, we have one citizen who has formally requested to speak before the board by submitting the required board meeting visitor form. As a reminder, individuals are allotted three minutes to address the board. Tonight's public comment request was made by Ms. Anna Stewart. Ms. Stewart, you are welcome to join us at the podium. Ms. Van Cleve will start your three-minute timer once you begin.
Mr. Chairman, school board members, Dr. Duke, Ms. Taylor, thank you for accepting my request to address the board. I have two children in the city school system, and I want to speak as one of many parents throughout the district who are concerned that our schools are not currently doing everything they can to keep our children safe. The MCS website reported 39 positive case numbers after the first week of school. During the second full week, last week, 89 new cases were reported. The highest case count in a week during the previous school year was 49. Nearby districts with optional masking policies are also seeing exponential growth in cases. Rutherford County Schools exceeded 500 infections, and Lebanon Special School District has been forced to close for the remainder of this week. The Centers for Disease Control recommends universal indoor masking in K through 12 schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics, as well as Murfreesboro's local physicians, at Tennessee Pediatrics and Murfreesboro Medical Clinic concur. Reports such as the peer-reviewed UC Davis study, published in the journal Nature, have proven that mask wearing helps in mitigating pandemics associated with respiratory disease. At the July 2020 MCS board meeting, legal counsel Elizabeth Taylor advised this board by saying, quote, "The school board has the authority to designate a dress code for students, and considering the COVID-19 pandemic and the guidance from the Health Department, I think making a mask part of the dress code is acceptable and enforceable by the school district," end quote. Protecting children is within your authority. As Governor Lee signed Executive Order 84, he stated, quote, "Districts will make the decisions they believe are best for their schools," end quote. According to Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona, school districts have the authority to implement public health protocols. Additionally, limiting individual school districts' abilities to provide a safe, in-person learning environment could place those districts in violation of their obligation under federal law. So, tonight, I ask you to follow best public health practices and keep our children and teachers safe. As MCS's Coordinator of Assessment, Attendance, and Data, Dr. Kimberly Osborne says, quote, "Data doesn't lie," end quote. Please take emotion, politics, and misinformation out of the argument and look instead at the data. Please pass a proactive mask mandate, such as this board enacted this past June, effective throughout the city schools. We are counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much, appreciate your comments. Spotlight on education?
All right, for our spotlight on education tonight, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sheri Arnett.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Tonight's spotlight on education is on our gifted program. We are very proud of the MCS gifted program, and we're even more pleased with a part of that program, which is our Gifted Academy. It is made possible by a grant through the Rebecca and Jennings Jones Foundation. Tonight, Dr. Heather Knox, one of our gifted specialists, is going to introduce you to the gifted team and share with you more about the Gifted Academy.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Well, first, I'd like to introduce you to our team, so along with myself, I have my colleagues Amy Jackson and Jennifer Whitlow, and we work really hard to kind of serve our gifted students, and I really wanted to talk about the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation and what they do for us. So beginning in 2015, Murfreesboro City Schools engaged in a partnership with Middle Tennessee State University to provide the necessary hours to obtain the gifted employment standard. In the state of Tennessee, all classroom teachers who provide direct instruction to students who are intellectually gifted must be served by a teacher who holds their gifted employment standard or endorsement, or be in consultation with someone who holds these credentials. To obtain this employment standard, teachers must complete 80.5 hours of training, that includes online coursework, a week of intense summer training, and four follow-up Saturday sessions. To date, the Murfreesboro City Schools Gifted Academy has trained over 180 teachers, with over 140 of those teachers remaining in the district, with many in leadership roles. The impact that these teachers has left imprints on the lives of many students throughout their deeper understanding of differentiation, thinking models, social, emotional, and the pre vocational needs of gifted and high achieving learners. The MCS Gifted Academy would not be possible without the continued support from the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation. Since the inception of this partnership, the foundation has provided us with financial support and guidance to help make this program a reality. Their contributions have impacted so many teachers, students, and parents in our district, and we could not be more grateful to them. We, when asked how Gifted Academy impacted their teaching, one of our teachers from our summer gifted program wrote, "I learned the importance of supporting gifted learners in the general education classroom. Before this training, I was guilty of believing that supporting lower-level students should take priority over my higher ones. Gifted students deserve new student, new learning each day. What I've learned in Gifted Academy will help me differentiate for all students." The Murfreesboro City School District would like to thank the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation for their support in helping to make the MCS Gifted Academy a reality and positively impacting our district and our students, who are the future of our world.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments, board members? Mr. Ballard?
Oh, Dr. Knox, how many would we have? How many would we have as identified as gifted?
Currently, we're at 129 in, in our district.
That's great, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Richardson?
Is there anything further that you might need to be able to assist this program?
Well, we are looking at expanding our program. Currently, we just do a Gifted Academy that provides this endorsement. We are looking to expand that to provide additional education on top of that for teachers who have already received their employment standard, so they could go deeper in, in their understanding and their service to gifted students.
Excellent, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am, very much, appreciate it, very good report. Next item on the agenda, consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items as printed on your agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. All right, action items. Board policy 1.401.
Yes, sir. Board policy 1.401 is presented to the board for review. Specific items for consideration would be lines 35 through 38 of the policy regarding the allowance of public speakers at a meeting who have not formally requested to speak to the meet, for the meeting by submitting the public input form.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the policy as written with the changes, policy 1.401?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, any question or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe the abolition of public comment, suae sponte, or as we have a meeting, sends the wrong message. I think it, it, it shows a fear of public participation, and I believe that there are less restrictive measures that could be put in place with, without going as far as what this would.
All right, elaborate on that a little bit, because I don't really understand what you're telling me, or telling us. Are you saying you're in favor of the policy, or you're, as written, with that part not being there?
I do, I'm not in favor of that policy.
Okay, okay, all right. All right, any other comments or questions? My understanding from the changes in the policy, it just makes sure that people who would like to address the board, and they can certainly do that, as long as they fill out the proper paperwork, as did Ms. Stewart for tonight. Am I correct on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, we have a, yes, ma'am, Ms. uh.
More.
More.
So does this leave us any option for granting authority for someone to speak who did not go through that channel? Is there, for a vote, like, could we take a vote on it, or does it leave us that option?
Yeah, I think Mr. Chair is the person who presides over the meetings, so if he wanted to and the board voted for it, it could be a possibility, even without it in the policy.
Thank you.
Ms. Barton?
My only issue with that, Amanda, is the fact that I want to be sure that we're consistent. So, you know, if we're, I don't want to vote one time to let somebody speak and the next time not to, because then it's like we're playing favorites, or we know somebody, or they know us, or something, so that's the only reason I kind of have a problem with that.
I agree, I agree with you. I just wondered if we left that escape hatch in, just like on, I don't think it should be used often.
Right.
I'm just saying, as long as it's, because I feel like Mr. Richardson's concern is if we shut that off completely, that we've closed some channel that we might need at some point. So I was just making sure it's, we still have a way to do it if we want, but I agree with you. I, I like the procedure, I like the policy, so we're not just.
Right.
Randomly doing it.
They have the opportunity to try to speak, I mean, everybody does. All they have to do is call and find out what to do.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognizing me. It's my fear that something may be emergent and that the public may need to address this board in a way that they are not able to timely apply to speak. I believe that there is a more regimented, more regulated approach to doing it. For example, an individual could rise at the end of the proceedings, state their name and ask that if they are able to speak. Mr. Chairman, you could ask then what their name was, where they live, if they have a student within a school, and then allow the board to vote whether or not someone can speak that night. If a, if a duly regulated procedure is put into place, then we avoid the appearance of impropriety or giving special treatment, or different treatment, to different individuals asking to speak. I believe it far more prudent to put in a policy that addresses the issues rather than removes it altogether and pretends it's not an issue.
Okay. Ms. Goff?
I disagree respectfully. I, I think that we give everybody the opportunity to fill out the proper forms, to speak before the board, and I think that we need that ability to have some dignity with our school board meetings, so I support this policy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I just want to point out, I love that this board can disagree and not be disagreeable. We can have different thoughts on how we're going to make children's lives better, not be distracted, teach them to read, teach them how to write well, teach them math, and without getting vicious, vitriolic, and hated. So I appreciate that, I appreciate this board. Thank you, Ms. Goff.
Mr. Ballard?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Taylor, does this override the chairman's ability just to recognize anyone that has to be recognized and the board to vote on it?
Can, can you repeat your question?
Okay, so if someone rises, you know, asks to be acknowledged to speak to the board, Mr. Chairman has the right to say he would like to hear, or he can grant them that based on the board agreeing with that, right, having a vote? And I didn't read this as superseding that.
You didn't read the policy as superseding that?
Right.
Correct.
I think that's what I just asked.
The rules of order allow for Mr. Chair to recognize speakers. This policy sets forth the method in which they'll be recognized. If that answers your question.
I think.
So to my colleague to the right, Mr. Richardson, are you, are you saying that this policy would eliminate the possibility of someone having the moment to stand and speak if they're acknowledged by the chairman and the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond?
Yes, sir.
That's my understanding of the proposed change to the rule. Now, with the rules of order that this board utilizes, we can always entertain, or excuse me, the chair can always entertain a motion to suspend the rules and thereby permit whatever it is that the, the chair deems appropriate, so there would be a recourse through the rules of procedure, but not our own board policies, as I understand it.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Any more discussion? Yes, sir?
Rather than question, I'd call to table this, unless that's part of the question.
I would second a table, Mr. Chairman.
We have to handle the motion that I have first, which was to call for the question.
And he'll need a second.
Okay, we have, do we have a second to call him for the question?
I have a second.
All right. Now, those in favor, roll call vote, please, ma'am, those in favor of.
Call him for the question.
Call him for the question, on the motion as printed. Yes or no?
Mr. Ballard?
Nay.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Goff?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Nay.
Mr. Richardson?
Nay.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
So that's four yeses and three nos, so the motion passes.
All right, so the question then has been approved. Am I right, Mr.?
Now, we can take it to a vote now.
So now we can vote on the policy as presented?
Correct.
Okay, roll call vote on that, please, ma'am. Voting yes for the policy as is printed, and no if you're not in favor of it, okay? All right.
Mr. Ballard?
I still have a question then. If, if I vote for it, I'm voting to, that we still can't have the, you know, the moment that someone wants to speak to address the chair and then the board approve it? Or is that included in this?
What the policy change is, based on what the discussion at the retreat, is to move that option as a matter of course in the policy. Without it in the policy, it would then defer to the rules of order, and it would have to be done in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order versus being a routine matter of policy.
If you vote, am I?
If you vote in favor for the policy as presented, it would now be a rule, of Robert's Rules of Order issue versus a Murfreesboro City Schools policy issue.
I'm going to vote nay.
Okay?
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Goff?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Nay.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
So that's five yeses and two nos, so the motion passes.
If the motion passes, we have approved policy 1.401 as presented tonight. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a point of information, is this, is this simply first reading? Will we read this again?
Yes.
Policy 4.212, virtual education program?
Yes, sir, we are recommending the approval of a new board policy regarding virtual education programming. This new policy aligns Murfreesboro City Schools with the State Board of Education's policy regarding a school district's ability to provide remote instruction to students who are on homebound or quarantine. Previously, this board approved a revision to our homebound instruction policy to include students on quarantine. However, additional guidance from the State Board of Education now requires that we adopt a new policy specifically for virtual education programming. This policy will help ensure that the continuity of instruction and educational opportunities for students who are unable to attend school due to the pandemic. Due to the fact that we've already started the school year, we are recommending approval of this policy on first and final reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve policy 4.212, virtual education program?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or discussion? All right, Ms. Moore, then Mr. Settles.
So is this policy what will allow us to have our four teachers we currently have who are teaching our students who are sent home on quarantine so that they still have some, some live instruction during the day?
Yes, absolutely. So we had originally, last board meeting, approved that under our homebound policy. When we received, received the new guidance from the State Board of Education, we implemented the new policy to make sure it was in line.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is first and final on this one?
We are asking for first and final reading because the school year has already started.
Okay, I knew there had to be a distinction and a reason, thank you.
All right, any other question? We have a motion, right?
We do.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. All right, next policy is, I have to scroll down every time.
Homebound.
Homebound instruction.
Yes.
4.206.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we are recommending the revision to our homebound policy to remove COVID-19 quarantine section, since this is now covered in policy 4.212, which the board has now approved.
We have a motion to approve policy 4.206.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Okay. Policy 4.206, we just did, approve of. Approve of additional assistant principal.
Yes, sir. Tonight, I'm coming to the board and recommending the approval of an additional assistant principal position to be shared between Salem Elementary and Scales Elementary School. These two schools have seen a growth in the number of students, and therefore, the number of faculty members they are responsible for overseeing. Salem currently has over 1,100 students enrolled, and Scales is currently approaching 1,000. In addition, both of these schools contain additional specialized special education classes, which require additional IEP meetings. The additional assistant principal would be available to assist with IEP meetings, teacher observations, and other administrative duties that must be completed by a certified school administrator.
We have a motion to approve the addition of additional assistant principals.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of ESP Advisory Board? Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir. Each year, we form an ESP Parent Advisory Board, consists of representatives from the ESP and parents of each school, and I would like to recommend that you approve the ESP Parent Advisory Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt.
I have a question.
Aye.
Well, let's get, let's get the motion, and we'll get a second, and then we'll get the question. Your motion is to approve. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moore. Now, Mr. Settles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How often does this board meet?
We will meet two times a year, once in the fall, once in the spring.
And the types of things they discuss? I think I ask this every year because I forget.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And it's another way for you to get it out there by ESP.
The current status of ESP, and the future of ESP, which, what direction, we want the parents' input on which direction that they want ESP to go, enrichments that are offered, things like that.
So this is primarily parent-driven?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pre-K Advisory Council?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Tonight, I come before you asking that you approve the members of the pre-K council. The purpose of the preschool advisory council is to provide the opportunity for collaboration between the Murfreesboro City Schools preschool program and the community partners. This council does meet two times a year, once in the fall and in the spring.
We have a motion to approve the council as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that the one position that isn't filled yet is the parent position. Is that, how's that determined, or when? Does that come about?
As soon as we have all pre-K students placed, and we are very close to that, then we select one for the year. Ms. Roxanna Dove is in charge of that.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of MCAP Infused Resolution?
Yes, sir. Board Policy 2.805 allows the board to join cooperative purchasing agreements in order to take advantage of lower prices and to reduce the cost involved in bidding for the benefit of the system. Under the law, the LEA may participate in a master agreement by adopting a resolution which accepts the terms of the master agreement. We are recommending approval of the proposed resolution, which will allow us to purchase COVID-19 tests and supplies through a state-approved vendor. The resolution allows us to take advantage of the state's contracted pricing. We are offering COVID testing in each school for our faculty, which is part of our COVID-19 plan, and in conjunction with the ELC grant we were awarded by the state of Tennessee.
All right, sir. We have a motion to approve the Infused Resolution?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, thank you. Any other question or comment? Mr. Ballard?
Dr. Duke, is this for COVID-related purchases only, or is it, you know, can we buy anything else through the cooperative?
Yes, sir. It's just for the tests. So it's for the actual tests themselves that we're purchasing, to administer to our faculty as needed, and then for sending those off as well.
Okay.
Ms. Goff? I'm sorry, were you finished?
No, I'm, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Goff?
I noticed, when I kind of researched this company, that there's not, we don't pay any membership fees. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. And this, again, the state has already bid this price out, so this allows us to join onto the state's bid.
We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Cafeteria Stipend?
Yes, sir. We are also recommending approval of a signing and retention bonus in an effort to attract and retain our school nutrition kitchen staff. Like many other industries, we are currently experiencing a worker shortage in this area, and we will use this stipend to help ensure the efficient operation of our school nutrition program. Currently, we are still in need of about 20 full-time kitchen staff. The stipend would be for $600 and would be paid out in two $300 increments at the end of each semester.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the stipend for the cafeteria.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment?
I have a question. This is stipend, right? So it's not, it's not going to be taxed like a bonus. Am I getting that right?
So I'm going to defer to Ms. Williams, our finance director, on that exact response, Mr. Settles.
Yes. Stipend and a bonus is considered supplemental pay, and through the IRS, this will be an additional payment, as opposed to included in their regular pay. So supplemental pay is taxed at a higher withholding rate, and I believe that's at 24%. It may change a little bit every year, but generally, it's at 24%, which is why we did take that into consideration when looking at the amount, total amount that we were going to pay our staff, which is why we raised it from first consideration of $500 per person to a total of $600, to offset and mitigate some of those necessary taxes that are withheld on individuals.
And this is for new hires? Is that correct, or current?
It is current and new hires, to retain and to attract.
And this money is generated from?
The money is generated, we received a, recently received, and we may have gotten the money today, $404,000 USDA grant. It's COVID-related. It's considered a loss-of-revenue grant for the March through June of 2020. And so we have, one of the best ways to use that money and to address our loss of revenue through COVID is to attract our workers.
Okay. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Dr. Duke, or to you. Do we know if any other surrounding school systems are doing something similar to this?
They are. There is, a local district is providing or offering a $500 bonus to attract their cafeteria workers. That's the only district that I'm aware of. There may be others, but that's the only district that I am aware of.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Ms. Moore?
Question. I know this is something that I asked you privately before this, but just comparing the stipend versus just raising the hourly wage of cafeteria workers, what was the deciding factor?
Absolutely. It was a great question, and we had, we had already approved our pay raise, which was a 3% increase across the board for all of our employees. That was part of the budgeting process, and that was something we considered, the fact that this board had already set the wages. And we actually looked at this the same way we look at our teaching staffs that are hard-to-fill teaching staff positions. As the board knows, every year, you approve a differentiated pay plan for our certified teachers who are hard-to-staff. Much like we do with ESP, we're treating our ESP workers this year and our cafeteria staff, because of those shortages, as hard-to-staff positions, and offering that same stipend.
Other questions? Mr. Ballard?
Thank you, sir. How many are we short on cafeteria workers?
We are currently short right at 20 full-time employees.
20?
Yes, sir.
That's a lot.
Which is probably, what?
We, when fully staffed, we have a...
5%?
Right at it. When we're fully staffed, we have a full staff of 95.
That's a lot.
And I will say, Ms. Shealy and her team, of course, are doing a fantastic job...
Of course.
Despite this circumstance, and making sure that our kids are being fed, our kids are getting what they need each day, and our principals are working really well with her as well, despite this shortage. But we could definitely use the extra help.
Where do we advertise that position?
Yes, sir.
Where do we advertise for that position? Where do we advertise for that? We do, I know we do recruiting, maybe word of mouth, that type of thing. I'm thinking when I go home, I'm going to put it on my Facebook, but...
We do work with that recruiting. We actually have done a lot of messaging directly to our parents, trying to identify parents who may be interested in that through social media channels. I believe, Mr. Ringstaff, do we post this on Indeed as well? Yeah, so we have other websites we're posting that on.
And I would like to clarify something, please. On the notes that you have concerning the $600 stipend for our cafeteria, there are some dates. On the second round, it's actually January 3, 2022, instead of 2021, going through May of 2022. So we'll clarify that date for you.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor of the cafeteria stipend? Please, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Budget amendments?
Yes, Ms. Williams will be presenting your budget amendments for the night.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. You been here long?
A long time, yes. We have before you tonight four budget amendments for your consideration, and I'll go just in very briefly. There are descriptions, pretty lengthy narratives that go along with that. And our first budget amendment is in our, is our federal fund, and this is, again, it's new grant money. And we are asking for, this is ARP, which is the American Rescue Plan, which is also COVID-related. We're asking for approval of two grants rolled up into one. It's for IDEA Part B students and for our preschool students. And it's a total of $504,000, and this is for our students receiving special education instruction. This provides supplemental opportunities, one of which is a new vision teacher, homebound teachers, some professional development, and, oh, some wonderful things that we would norm, we would not be able to have otherwise. So that's the first amendment. And the second one is in our cafeteria fund, and this budget's the $404,000 COVID-related grant that we just received. So it will fund the cafeteria personnel from Ms. Shealy. And in addition to that, we're asking for some equipment, some routine repair and maintenance, some things that we were not able to do last year. So in addition, we're also trying to, we're looking at our farm-to-school program, and the need for a part-time farmer for that program. The other two budget amendments are in our general purpose fund. One of them budgets the assistant principal position that you just approved. In addition to that, we're looking at special ed contracts. The main reason for that particular budget amendment is to just get it in the more descriptive, transparent category, so that you'll know exactly what you're approving. And then some furniture and fixtures. And then the final budget amendment, we are looking at growth, tremendous growth in our district just since the beginning of the school year. So we're looking at, in addition to the assistant principal to be shared with Salem and Scales, we're also looking at teaching positions and educational assistance to help in those hard-to-fill areas. So, and all of the related budget amendments that go along with that. And we're taking that out of our health services category. So fortunately, we were, we received the ELC or nursing grant, and that has given us this one-time ability to rebudget some previously budgeted funds in order to look at our teaching growth positions. So this is either new grant money or growth that we're looking at.
All right. Do we have a motion first to approve the amendment, the budget amendments as printed, as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Now, do we have discussion or questions? Mr. Settles?
So, the, you do such a good job of explaining this. It's just, it's my brain that's the problem. The continuation of this, especially the teacher part, are we hoping that growth funds will come in and kind of kick in? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
Next year?
We really are. And, and I'll talk about this in a little bit later on, some of our financial highlights. We've been able to add some additional money to our fund balance. But Trey, I believe, Dr. Duke, you had a discussion with Mary Ann Dursky from the state the other day.
We very much envision getting growth funds this year, based on our current numbers, and usually above 2% is what they fund for growth funds, and we are over that, for not just last year, but for where we were two years ago with COVID as well. So looking at our numbers and the conversation I heard with her last week, I fully intend on that we will receive growth funds this year.
And that'll, that'll take care of the increase. And the others were, I think I'm getting it right, these were a lot of one-time hits, maintenance and being able to purchase things that we needed and maybe had to put off, but never kind of able to. So...
Yes.
You do a good job of shuffling stuff. I wish, you know, you could come home and work on my budget. That'd be great.
All right, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Budget amendments number one and two were grants, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there's no obligation on our end. That's, that's money that we'll be receiving and using.
Yes, that is correct. There are no matching funds related to those grants.
Budget number three, the assistant principal. Now, historically, has that been brought up at the time of the hiring, or is that typically brought up at the end of the year?
Historically, I would say that may have been brought up at the end of the year. I would, I think we would prefer to have these amendments before you on a more frequent, regular basis.
You mentioned transparency. Is that a reason why you would choose to do that?
Yes.
So that our stakeholders in the community can have a more timely understanding of how we're spending our funds?
That is correct.
And on amendments one through four, do you believe them all to be reasonable and necessary?
I do. I do.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as printed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Very much. Okay. COVID protocol, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. As the board knows, despite our hope that we would be moving into a school year where the pandemic was solidly behind us, for now, that is not the case. What we know is COVID continues to challenge us as a school system, and that this is a serious situation we are facing across our community. We are also keenly aware that regardless of the action that is taken by our school district, there will be many of our community members who feel we have not done enough, while there will be others who will think we are overstepping our role. I know we have all heard from so many with varying viewpoints on what the best course of action is for our students, and I know all of us have weighed carefully how to best respond. Now that we have completed two full weeks of school, we can look and see real numbers of what is occurring in our buildings. In our first week, we saw 40 positive cases identified in our students and staff. This is nine cases short of our weekly high from last year. This past week, the number of positive cases rose to 98, which is an increase of 58% from the previous week, and double last year's one-week high. When we consider these numbers, it is important to understand what tools we could consider last year that are no longer at our disposal. This includes the state limiting our ability to offer remote learning to families. It is important to note that as a district, we have already recognized the rising numbers we have seen in the last two weeks, and we have already responded along the way. We have increased our messaging around masking to ensure all parents are hearing directly from us around this practice. In addition, we have targeted messaging to specific schools where we are seeing an alarming rise in cases. Finally, we have also offered parents the ability to remove their children from MCS to temporarily homeschool without losing their zone waiver or spot in our magnet programs. All of these are in addition to other protocols we have implemented to assist in quickly identifying and responding to cases in our building. Our goal has been and continues to be full transparency, so that families can make appropriate decisions. However, as the numbers continue to rise, it is important that we continue to take necessary precautions to ensure we can operate our school safely and in person. We are aware that the governor's executive order provides all parents an opt-out option should they feel masking is not in their child's best interest. And our task is to take steps to help us respond to what is occurring in our contact. we are doing all we can to keep our schools open, we are recommending that beginning this Thursday, MCS move to a mask requirement for all Murfreesboro City School buildings when indoors and social distancing cannot be maintained unless a formally, unless a family has formally opted out of the requirement in accordance with the governor's executive order. Should, should the board approve this recommendation, our team will use tomorrow to clearly communicate to parents what to expect in the days to come. Furthermore, because of the fluid and changing nature of this pandemic, I would recommend this be a temporary requirement that begins this Thursday, August 26th, and ends on Wednesday, September 29th. This would give our central office team as well as the board time to assess the situation and determine if there needs to be an adjusted or extended, extended requirement based on the current information at the September 28th board meeting. Finally, due to the importance of this topic, I would recommend that no changes to the approved, approved procedures occur outside of board approval. In summary, I am formally recommending MCS move to a temporary mask requirement in all MCS buildings when indoors and social distancing cannot be maintained from Thursday, August 26th until Wednesday, September 29th, unless a family formally opts out. Additionally, any changes to the approved procedure should occur by a board vote, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the recommendation.
Would you, would you explain how a parent can opt out and what the procedure is there?
So should the board approve the procedure, we'll use tomorrow to push that information out, and Ms. Trail will work on that. We will send that information to our families where they can access the form to opt out. They will have to formally, in writing, opt out per the governor's executive order, so we'll make that available on our system website for families to access if that's their desire.
And they will have, how long to get that done?
So our intent is for the, based on the recommendation that we're giving to the board, that the mask mandate begin on Thursday, so that would give families tomorrow time for us to push that information out where they could go online and fill that form out online, and then the mask mandate recommendations, it would begin on Thursday.
Okay. All right, do we have other questions before we vote on the, well, let's, let's have a motion to approve or disapprove of the recommendation, and then we'll have discussion.
Question to approve.
All right, thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Now, questions and comments from anyone? Mr. Ballard?
The September 20, September 29th date, I noticed the, the executive order goes until the October 5th. Is there any?
So the intent behind the September 29th date is because this is a fluid and changing situation, that's one day past our next board meeting, so that means at the next board meeting, we would decide as a board if we were going to continue the recommendation that we put in place, or if we wanted to modify or adjust it.
Okay. You, you don't mean the next board meeting, you mean?
I don't, you're right, sir. I'm sorry, the board meeting on September 28th.
Okay, all right. So this would be in effect until?
Yes, sir.
Then, okay. Mr. Richardson, I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and this is for Ms. Elizabeth Taylor. Previously, we had vested the authority to mask or to not mask with Dr. Duke. By adopting this recommendation, would we have to change our policy with regards to permitting the director to make that decision?
I don't think that that was ever put in a policy. It was part of the COVID operating procedures, so we don't have a policy that explicitly says that the board in adopting the previous reopening plan, that was part of it, so this would supersede the previous plan.
So that was strictly for that reopening plan at that time?
Correct.
And as you understand the executive order, is there anything that precludes adding a waiver of liability against the school system if they, if a parent wants to opt out?
Not as I read the executive order, no.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Settles?
I have a question. It's not directly related to that, it's more related to the executive order. Can you kind of explain what an executive order does or can do or cannot? I've heard a couple of things, and that's kind of why I'm asking or putting the question to you, because you went to law school and everything.
So, um, without, I don't want to be too legalistic, because I know you get on me about that, Mr. Settles, but the General Assembly in state law has granted the governor the authority to issue these executive orders, and basically, based on an attorney general's opinion, these executive orders have the force of law. So it's like the law for the state of Tennessee, what this executive order says, and that's based on the authority given to him by the General Assembly.
So then the attorney general would, would be charged with bringing charges or not? If, if the exec, in other words, if I violate an executive order, it comes up to the district attorney to bring charges? I'm saying as an, I'm not even saying as a board, just as an executive order, period. Then it would be the responsibility of the district attorney to?
Correct. It's a misdemeanor charge to not follow an executive order. I can't remember what class, but it is a misdemeanor, so that would fall to the district attorney.
And I'm, I'm just pushing, just to make sure I get it very clear. If the board said, we're not going to follow an executive order, and the attorney general decided to move forward with charges, who would be charged? Would it be him? I'm just pointing.
The board.
Yeah.
Would it be Dr. Duke? Or would, I, I mean, I'm okay if it's but.
I, I don't think any member would be charged in the individual capacity, but the board in its official capacity, since you guys are the ones that are taking the vote and that would, if you guys chose to vote against the executive order, then it would be an official action of the board, not Dr. Duke.
So whatever came out of it, it would be the responsibility of the board to bear that cost or that burden or whatever. In other words, I, I'm not just trying to keep myself from going to jail, I'm just asking. Would, would we all have to go down there?
Would you have to go where?
Jail.
I don't think you would be arrested.
I just want to make sure.
I mean, we have MPD here, we can ask if they're going to take you in.
They want to take me anyway.
But I, I, I honestly, I don't know. I don't know that this has been tested in the state yet.
And I'm, I'm asking because I know of, everybody does, this, this is not something that nobody's dealing with. They're dealing with this all over the country, and I ask in a lighthearted way, but in a very serious way, because it is essential that we understand what the force of the law is.
And, and I would say if this board decided that a stand would want to be made against the executive order, I mean, that should be done through legal recourse, not necessarily, I would say, violating the executive order. There are ways to challenge an executive order through the legal process.
So your advice to us as a board was, if we wanted to say, we appreciate Dr. Duke taking this approach, et cetera, et cetera, but we want to put something in with more teeth, your advice would be, maybe don't do a policy, but maybe do something legally?
We're not adopting a policy today.
No, no, I understand.
For proofing.
But if we wanted to do something?
Through proper legal channels to challenge the executive order.
That would be your advice to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballard?
With all that said, this, Dr. Duke's recommendation does not violate the executive order.
It does not. The recommendation I'm presenting does include the governor's executive order and a family's ability to opt out.
Okay.
Ms. Barton?
I, I feel like people should understand this, but possibly they don't. I am in not any way agreeing with Governor Lee's order. All I know is that it's going to be really difficult to enforce. Parents will have the right, regardless of what we do, to send children without masks. And I don't really want to keep children out of school because their parents are choosing for them not to wear a mask. I think that goes against some of what we believe, what I believe as an educator and a principal for 32 years. Obviously, I, I'm, I'm working part-time in a medical office, I understand, I agree, but we can't enforce it, and I don't think it's fair to the children who don't have a choice, they're doing what their parents tell them to do. I'm, I'm sorry, I think that has to be said.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Ms. Taylor, can Governor Lee or any other Tennessee governor have an executive order about what curriculum we're going to use?
I would imagine, if it falls into some emergency situation, possibly, I don't think so.
Well, there would be, I could think of something right now that's going on that there could be an executive order about with curriculum, so, I mean, I, I think he could.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would depend on the circumstances, but I honestly, I don't know.
So how much authority are we going to see being exercised by the governor on local governments moving forward?
I think that's the question. I mean, and that's when people, local governments start to push back against an overreach.
I absolutely agree. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
I think, I think if we read, we, there are different opinions on the executive order, whether it can be enforced or not, whether it's a violation of a federal law from the U.S. Department of Education, we know that letter has come, but I don't think right now that is our question and our concern. I think our concern right now is the safety of our students and the safety of our employees. And as I understand the recommendation, this means mask required for everybody that's in that building. If I walk in that building, I've got to have a mask. The principal's got to have a mask, the teacher's got to have a mask. Am I correct, Dr. Duke?
That is correct.
So, you know, I think it's, I put a posting on, on my Facebook page a week and a half ago, after the governor came out with his statement about mandates, and simply said, what is your opinion of that and whether or not students should wear masks in school? As of today, I had over 450 comments, and out of that 450, I would say 425 all said we need to wear a mask. The medical facility people have told us, pediatrics are telling us, I'm getting emails and, and questions, I mean, answers from Dr. Little, Murfreesboro Medical Clinic, pediatrics every day. And cases are, are rising, and, and it's rising not only with adults, but more, more so with young people. At this point in time, I can remember August the 8th, there were a total of 33 cases that Murfreesboro Medical Clinic saw that day. 16 of those were ages from zero to 10. 17 were ages 10 to 20. So our young people are becoming infected and they're getting sick. Our pediatrics offices, hospitals, nurses, they can't see on a regular basis kids who have a cold because they're seeing so many that are sick from the virus. I, I hope, and you probably can tell, I'm very much in favor of, now, we don't like masks, I don't like them any more than anybody else does, but if it means saving a child from getting sick, and as Roseanne said, you know, if a parent has a chest pain and they go to one of these nurses and the nurses say, I think you've got a heart problem, you think they're going to say, wait a minute, no, I, I, I need to check with somebody else out in the community. We've got to believe what those people in those professions are telling us, and we've got to adhere to what they're telling us. It would be like me going and telling Dr. Jordan at TOA how to do a knee surgery. I have no clue, but I will trust him to tell me how he's going to do it because he knows how. Thank you, sir, for your recommendation. I'm going to Ms. Garfield, then Mr. Richardson.
On a lighter note, when, when children are going out to recess or maybe even during the, the morning or in the afternoon, are they encouraged, can they run around and not have their mask on and?
Yes.
Can teachers be encouraged to give them like a 15-minute, go outside and get some fresh air break?
So the ma, the recommendation we're making is for when indoors and social distancing cannot be maintained. So playground, outside in the morning, coming in from the car, all that information, all of that time when they're not inside the building, would be mask optional at that point. It's when we're inside the building and we can't completely social distance that we're asking for the requirement to be put in place.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
All right, question's been called for. Do I have to have a second for that? I do, a second.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, pardon me for interrupting, I will withdraw that. I believe Mr. Settles had a question.
Mr. Settles?
I did, I have just one final question. How does this recommendation, and I want to boil it down because Roseanne said something very, very true, how does this recommendation actually differ from what we had in place anyway, which was mask optional by parents? The only difference that I see, from my reading, the only difference that I see is the parents have to fill out a, the only difference I see is that the parents have to go through a formal process to say, I don't want my child to wear a mask, whereas today, or before we put this in place, all they have to do is just not send them with a mask. So I, I'm in support of doing as much as we can, and if this is as much as we can, I have no choice but to support it. However, I feel like this is like an alligator with no teeth, because it's the same thing we did, which is basically, parents, you get to decide whether your child goes to school with a mask on, and if my child, I say my grandchild, has on a mask, he gets to keep his mask on, yours does not, and it's no different than what we already had in place. The only thing we're kind of doing is saying, if you really don't want to wear a mask, you got to come by the office, Lisa will develop a form or hire if it's going to work, and you can sign it, and then we won't require him to wear a mask, which is basically the same thing, we're putting an extra little layer, a step there, and I can't see any parent that is very adamant about their child not wearing a mask, that's, that's nothing. Give me the paper, I'll sign it. And I'm not saying, you know, I'm just, I guess, I, I don't want to say I'm venting, but I'm, I'm wondering if, if this differs at all from what we had. I know we're working within the parameters of the, of the governor's executive order. I, I honor that, everything that goes with it, and I, I honestly, I'm going to have to vote in favor of it, I'll tell you that now. However, I feel like we're being a little timid as a board when we don't stand up and say to the governor that we know better how to take care of our kids in Murfreesboro than you do in Nashville, or wherever you live, or whatever it is that you're doing, because we understand what's going on here. We see these kids, I'm in fear for my grandkids every day when they go to school, because this thing is not going away. It is actually not leaving, and we are stuck, and we have to learn how to live with it, and we are pushing it and pushing it, pushing it further, rather than to stand up and say, you know what, send me a fine, whatever it is. One, one superintendent said, if you really think that you can hold my salary up in, in opposition to supporting the health and the safety of these kids, hold my salary up, you know, take my money. So it's, I'm sorry, I'm done.
So the, the difference between the, what we're currently doing and what the recommendation is applies, would specifically be, as you said, the formal opt-out model, and then also it would apply to staff. So the governor's executive order does not apply to any adult in the building, so, whereas currently, we have continued to use the word strongly recommending with our staff, it would be a requirement for our staff.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I call for the question.
Ms. Barton was first.
But, Mr. Settles, you did say ultimately you're going to vote for the recommendation because our, our hands are virtually tied in this. Whether or not we decide to do something else, make some other kind of stand or motion or something against the order is still possible.
Thank you.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I want to be sure that everybody.
You're right.
It's, it's a, it's a horrible situation to be in, it's a horrible choice to have to make, and nobody likes it, but we've got to go through the right channels to get something actually changed.
All right, we have a question's been called for. Again, do we have a second for the question?
Second.
Second, Ms. Settles, all in favor of voting on the question? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we can vote. Am I correct?
Correct.
Whew. Second, Mr. Settle, are all in favor of voting on the question? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now we can vote. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right. Roll call vote, please, ma'am. Those in favor of the recommendation are yes. Those who are not in favor of the recommendation, no.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Goff?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yea.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
That's seven yeses. The motion passes.
Thank you. A unanimous decision by the Murfreesboro City School Board. Thank you, Dr. Duke, for your work and your recommendation brought forth. Next item on the agenda is reports and information enrollment. Who's got that, Mr. Marlin?
Good evening, board. I draw your attention to the large paper that you have in front of you. Yes, we have so much information, we thought it'd be easier to read if you had the larger print. I refer you to the enrollment page first, and that shows, that's the page that has the blue top, the blue line at the top. To the right-hand side, you'll see the growth over the last year, and this indicates that we have grown an additional 432 students. That's from the end of last year. So that's as of our ending in May, and so we've grown 432 students. If you'll look over on the left-hand side, you'll notice each school is listed there. And for each school, we have numbers for last year and for the current year. If you'll scroll to the middle of that page, and you'll see the totals line, you'll see that the total for each school. And starting with Black Fox at the top, Black Fox at the end of last year had 862 students. They currently have 898 students, or excuse me, this is as of last Friday, which was our 11th day to count. You'll notice to the right of that, a net difference of 36 students. So we've included that for each school. And as you scroll down through there, you'll notice that Salem has grown 172 students. Overall Creek has grown 58 students. And on that west side of town, you'll see that Casey Lane has grown 86 students. Another large growth area was at Ermasse Eagle for 66 students there. So that's a good-sized increase. That is the enrollment page. If you have any questions about that, I can help you with.
Ms. Moore?
How does this current number stand with where we were pre-COVID, the 2019-2020 year?
I don't have that number handy. I'll be glad to put that together in a spreadsheet for you.
I think we were right at 9,250. So we've grown an additional almost 200.
So we made up from last year and have grown.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
From this time last year, the same date last year, that's a growth of about 580 students, if that helps.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. The growth in these areas, did we expect those areas to grow the way that they did?
We did. We had expectations of growth, yes.
And you believe that growth is being managed appropriately at this time?
Yes.
Very well. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Marlin, continue. I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you. Everywhere we, you know, every road I go down or every turn I make, I see more apartments going up. And, you know, I feel every time I drive by one of those thousand unit apartments, I'm fearful for what, how many students are going to come pouring out of those apartments. Do we have some kind of monitoring? And I know in the past, we've done some demographic studies and such, but, I mean, do we feel like, where's this going to peak and start to turn or flatten?
I'm happy to answer that. So we are monitoring it, and we are watching it very closely. So I get monthly reports from the city specifically on open lots, permits being issued, apartments, where they're zoned, so we can look at that. In addition, Ms. Avisa and I are working now to project out, and we're working with the GIS system here at the city to kind of align that, to say, "Where are we expecting to be in the next few years?" and tightening up those numbers as quickly and closely as we can.
Thank you.
So the next page, if you'll turn to that second page, this is our pupil teacher ratio for this year. Like the first page we looked at, we have by school, and we have last year's comparison to this year. The important factors that we want to pay attention to are at the bottom of the page, and at the very bottom of the page, on the right-hand side, you'll see the 21-22 regular education PTR. Those numbers for kindergarten through third grade are at 18.87. That's across the district. You can find that same number for each school in the middle column. And then for the fourth grade through sixth grade, in blue, it's 20.77. So that's for each teacher, 20.77 students. And you'll find that in the right-hand column in the blue section for each school as well. Any questions about our pupil teacher ratio?
Mr. Settles?
We're still under the state requirement on that, right?
Yes, sir. We are.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore?
And does the state requirement, does it just have to be an average across the district? Or does it have to, we have to meet it in each school?
It's an average per school, and it's average per grade level. That's why we report it out this way. So there's a percentage or a pupil teacher ratio for K through three and then four through six. And so all of ours are...
And so we just, as a district, on the average of all our schools, have to meet it? That's my question. Does each school have to meet that average?
Yes.
For grade?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Some of ours seem to be over. I mean, we may meet it on average, right? Is 20 the max for K through three?
When you look at K through three, for the three, for the grade band, it's 20.5.
20.5.
And that's the average across all those, all those grades.
What that allows is if you have a grade level like first grade that is higher, if your kindergarten or second grade is lower, as long as that K3 average is 20.5 to 1, then you are sufficient there. And then in fourth through six, it's 25 to 1.
Okay. Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marlin. Very good report. Appreciate your work and all that you do. All right. Let's see. Where are we? Revenue expenditure of the budget, report, rather?
Hi. Before you tonight, we have the not-so-final but close-enough final numbers for June of 2021. These are unaudited numbers, but they're pretty good, good numbers. Some of them may be based on estimates, but the estimates are reasonable estimates. So before you tonight, there is, you have a page of the financial highlights on both the revenue and expenditures. I would like for you, if you would, to flip over to the second page, the comparison of budget totals. This is a snapshot and just a couple of summary figures that just let you know in total where we stand. So total revenues for the year was just over 93 million, and our total expenditures were 91 and 1/2 million. So the difference, that 1.5 million, that's excess revenue over expenditures. So that's what we like to see.
And that goes to our fund balance? Is that...
So there are several different kinds of fund balance equity accounts. So we have the unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is generally what we talked about during our budget meetings. You may remember, I believe it was $8.2 million. And that is our unassigned fund balance. So out of that 1.5 million additional revenue over expenditure, about $600,000 is going to the unassigned fund balance. Because we have so many state grants in our general purpose fund, those unspent dollars, we have to set them aside, and they're legally restricted for that, a very specific purpose. So we're going to record those under a reserve. But for the unassigned fund balance, we're a little on the plus side, so I'm very grateful for that.
Yeah.
And I think that's about it. You're familiar with the year-to-date revenue reports and the expenditures. And it's just a little bit more detail. It shows you our, some of our local dollars, state dollars, and federal dollars.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Good report.
Thank you.
The records update. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. I have a few updates for you tonight. First of all, I want to recognize Casey Lane Academy. They have received a $5,000 grant from the Richard Siegel Foundation. This grant will be used as part of their STEM program and will assist in developing some outdoor STEM places. So we're excited and thankful to the Richard Siegel Foundation for that. At our last board meeting, I believe, we brought up Northfield's entrance, and we discussed the improvements that were made to the front sidewalks of Northfield. I'm happy to say these were completed before the first day of school. We are also in the process of working with the city to make some minor repairs on the front archway of Northfield. Work will be completed on this project during the weekend and after-school hours. The timeline for that, it won't be finalized until a final meeting with the engineer and material lead time. So if you still see some construction going on outside of Northfield, that is not the sidewalk, just a minor repair to that brick facade. For the past several years, the Murfreesboro Housing Authority has been working on an affordable housing redevelopment plan that included Oakland Park, Mercury Court, and Parkside, the housing neighborhoods. The master plan includes a change to the building which housed two of our pre-K classes at Mercury Court. In addition, several extensive infrastructure issues have recently been identified to that Mercury Court facility. Due to this, we are moving those two preschool classrooms to open rooms at Hobgood Elementary. Mercury Court has been part of the Hobgood Elementary School for several years, including the fact that Ms. Bell, the principal, oversaw that facility. So moving these two classes to Hobgood is going to help us ensure we can provide uninterrupted services to our students, and it will result in all of our preschool students being housed in MCS buildings.
So there was actual space there at Hobgood for the...
Yes, ma'am.
Classes?
We had two empty classrooms. We were able to do some shuffling and moving just some teachers to a different end of the hallway to allow the pre-K classrooms to have what they needed in those buildings.
Ms. Moore?
And is there a bus that runs from near Mercury Court to Hobgood? It's about a mile.
Yes. And we don't, so our pre-K classroom started there. They never actually served in Mercury Court this year. And do you want to talk about busing for preschool?
Parents, for VPK, parents bring their students.
It's always that way. Okay.
Okay. Next, we have, we approved the stipend for the cafeteria workers today. Thank you for that. In the last meeting, we did it for our ESP workers. We have moved about 200 students off of our waitlist in ESP, which we're very excited about. We have seen an increase in applications, and we've hired about half of the staff that we need. But with MTSU back yesterday, we anticipate a continued increase in applications. We'll also be present at the MTSU September Job Fair. We need about 30 more staff to fully staff our ESP program district-wide. So we're excited that we've cut that number in half. I wanted the board to know, we are still, you know, looking for those positions, and we're still actively seeking it. And we're very hopeful that with MTSU back, we are going to fill those quickly. Finally, we are getting many questions on what will happen if we have to shut down schools due to the large number of illnesses. So first, let me say, this would absolutely be a last resort for us. We know that this would be a huge inconvenience for families, and we would not take this decision lightly. However, should we find ourselves in a position that we did need to use this option, we would have to utilize one of our stockpile days, or more commonly known as our snow days, as they, to accommodate for shutting down a school. The Tennessee State Board of Education passed rules that limit our ability to offer any remote instruction unless it's in response to a specific student quarantine, or unless the governor declares a state of emergency for schools. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on that, but that is a question we're getting from the public quite a bit, so I'm sure you are as well, about our limited ability and having to use. We have nine stockpile days that we use throughout the year, and that would be our limit currently.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Moore?
Yes, just on the governor's state of emergency, isn't there some type of state of emergency that he just reauthorized recently? Is that separate from what would be needed for a school to be understood?
That is correct. And that was the response. I asked the same question, and that was the response I got, that it would have to be a state of emergency specifically dealing with the school system.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ballard?
So how would this, what you're explaining about a day or shutting down, how would that differ from occasionally, we've done that for flu? We've had schools down for a week or down for a few days. Did we handle that just as snow days?
Yes, sir. So in the past, any adoption to that calendar, we would have to use those nine stockpile days, and once those days are out, those days are gone.
Okay, thank you.
We have historically not used that many nine snow days. Of course, last year, I think we got pretty close, Mr. Ringstaff, if that's correct. We got pretty close, though. There was that big snowstorm followed by the ice storm, or vice versa, that put us out for over a week.
Okay.
And finally, I just want to continue to remind our families, you know, and I've said to the board, I had some great conversations with some of our medical staff, Dr. Ferguson, Mr. Little, and several that we have talked to, and Ms. Matthews Dixon at the Health Department, who's been a great partner to us through this whole process. And I really appreciate what they've contributed to this, and I wanted to just publicly say thank you to them. They have been great supporters of Murfreesboro City School. They have provided great guidance to us, and we really appreciate their help.
For sure.
Okay. I'd like to make one final comment pertaining to tonight's meeting. Those of you that are in the audience or maybe at home on television, we, you know, rumors fly oftentimes. And we were told today, some of us were, that we could expect a large contingent of people, those in favor of masks and those against masks, and they were going to march and signs and protest and all that. I am very happy to say that Murfreesboro, Tennessee community, I think, is very much above that. And I'm sure that there are those who don't, did not agree or don't agree with what we did tonight pertaining to COVID and masks. But I would hope that everybody would adhere to it, at least for the time period that we have set forth, the month and go. And I really do appreciate those of you that have been here tonight, and I'm not going to say behaving, but acting like adults and agreeing and listening. And I hope that what we have said and done tonight will meet with your approval and that we can move forward. And let's hope that within another month, we can get rid of some of this stuff that we've been dealing with for the last year and a half, although I'm afraid that it's affecting our young people more so today than it did in the past. Thank you very much. I really do appreciate it. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Similar to what you said, I want to thank all the teachers, every parent, every medical professional, everyone involved in the school system that wrote over 1,000 emails just to one of my email addresses. I won't tell you how many calls I've gotten either. It means so very much to be involved in our local schools and our local government. I encourage you all to remain passionate and remain engaged. Mr. Chairman, as you noticed, there are people here that have differing opinions on what we just voted on. But again, we weren't disagreeable. And I think that's reflective of Murfreesboro values, and I'm very appreciative of this city and the folks that are here present, passionate and being active. So thank you all very much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership.
Yes. Mr. Settles?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. I would like to ask, I don't know how this works, but I'd like to find out, I'm sure our attorney is the one to do it, how we, Roseanne brought it up in her comments, what do we do to legally challenge the governor's executive order? I'd like to know. I don't know if that requires everybody on the board to request it. I don't know how that works. But I will speak for David Settles. I know it's not like a formal inquiry or anything like that, but I would like to know, I would like the city attorney, I'm sorry, the school board attorney, to find out what means, what avenues, whatever we need to do, that would be a challenge, or that some way we can do more than what we're able to do today. I don't know who, if I speak for anybody else, but I'm going to speak for me.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second?
All in favor, good night.
Good night.
Good night.